Alright, everybody, it's seven o'clock. We will call this meeting to order. I'd like to start with the Fledges' Legions. Sue, would you mind? Can you just reply?
The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So, first thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. I'd like to... Alright, so, we have the meeting minutes from last meeting. Is there any changes, adjustments to the minutes from last meeting? Anybody like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes and the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March 19th as we scan.
Motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The next thing we have on the agenda for tonight is citizens' comments. At this point, I'm going to choose to recuse myself and let Mike, the co-chairperson, handle this part of the agenda.
Would you like to approach the podium and speak now, so that...
Say your name.
My name's Anthony Minney, Church Road, 5864, Church Road. I want to address, I'm kind of flabbergasted that this man here that just left, I'm here to complain about it, the company. We were at the board meeting last week, okay? This was never brought up about him being head guy here.
He's a chair.
Okay, nobody was saying nothing about it last week. I have a complaint about his business. I'm here to complain about the rock crusher he fired up last week. I'm here to complain about how far back he is off 26. I don't think you guys took into consideration the people that live on Church Road. They're not here because they're probably either working or they're...
He's working.
Vegas, he's working.
He's working.
They're in their backyard. You guys ever, did you understand that? Did you approve that, to go that far back?
Well, we knew it went that far back, for sure.
Excuse me?
We knew that the property went that far back.
Oh, I understand it went that far back. But for him to do what he's doing back there, you're in our backyard. I just sit on my clock, and I live across the street from these people, okay? I can walk, look out the window and see them loading up trucks, dump trucks dumping concrete, everything back there. How can this board approve of that? It's not set up for a crusher. And you have to be heavy industrial. Not industrial, it has to be heavy industrial. We're not set up for heavy industrial. We're set up for industrial. That's what the board told me last week. Right or wrong?
We're set up for industrial.
I understand that. But to have a rock crusher, you've got to have heavy industrial, not industrial. That's why I remember township was having a cow with chartered on back there. He had industrial back there. It's got to be heavy industrial. Even though we're in a different town, as I understand that. If that's the case, church should have bought quarter lot and set up shop right here if you've got to be going a lot. Another thing is, I live next door to commercial, okay? The same thing that I'm complaining about across the street from the people that are in the backyard of ZLM. The next door neighbor is commercial, okay? Why are you allowing them to go that far back in somebody's backyard? When really the cutoff is, from, I think, in my opinion, from 26 should go as far back as you guys approving the commercial on Church Road. You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah.
When you turn on the Church Road off 26, I'm going to say the two houses, first two houses, that's all commercial there. You guys own that commercial. Right or wrong?
I don't know.
You don't know? But what I'm saying is, if you're going to allow that, that's fine. Why does people got to come farther back into everybody's backyard now? He's in, you people need to stop, just drive down Church Road. All you got to do is look to the left. You'll see mountains. The worst part is the beepers, the clanking of the dozers. They need tracks. But, they're in the backyard. They're in our backyard. I mean, if you're going to zone commercial that everybody knew was the first two houses off Church Road, anybody on 26 really should be that borderline right there in their backyard. Not put it in the backyard of two peoples. You understand what I'm saying?
Alright, well, definitely.
I mean, are you guys, would she approve for that?
Well, I think we'd like to ask a couple of questions of you.
Okay.
You're here basically because of the noise factor?
Yes.
Is that what I understand?
Yes. The noise and...
The lights.
He could have had a little courtesy and put up a, you let every, you have other people to put barriers up. I mean, he could have put a barrier up or some... They're in their backyard. Hi, it's higher than our houses.
How long has this been going on?
Oh, last two months.
Oh.
So, something new they just started doing?
Yeah, the last two months because they fired up the rock crusher last week. And I live across the street. And I'm in the barn. And I hear this thing just rumbling. I get outside, they fire the crusher up. I did call the township and I think a couple of other people called the township up here. I mean, it's, I think that the noise coming from the woods that's on the backside of it, get that echo in there and it's making, it makes it worse.
Now, are you doing this during business hours? Is this late at night, early in the morning?
Oh, no, this is during the day.
Just during the day.
Yeah, that's another thing too. I mean, we all work late and early. Try, it's five o'clock, six o'clock, eight, seven o'clock, eight o'clock at night and they're still going at it. I mean...
You're not using such an operation at like four by the morning.
If that's the case, and if you want to take that up, take it farther up to your, up to the 26 then. Don't do all your stuff in the backyard of our yards to do your business. You understand?
Yeah, no.
But have you guys never been down Church Road and looked over there?
Yeah, all the time.
I mean, you're okay with that?
Never paid attention to being so far back to where it was affecting you guys at all.
It's on the people that are not here. It's on their, the property backs up to it. I mean, and I told a gentleman last week when he was here, I said, "If that's the case, have a little consideration and put it on the other shop." Well, now that's where it ended up, our site plan. Well, no, I just, you're not taking into consideration for all the people here. And for him to be on the board here, that's a conflict of interest. Right off the get-go. I never, really, I'm flabbergasted when I walked in here. This is the first time I've been here. For him to be on his board and do that, what he's doing over there, don't you guys see this conflict of interest? Honestly, I mean, you're going to have...
He owns a business. So, he owns a business and he lives in his community too.
I understand that.
But in his backyard, man.
Would you like, let me tell you...
You guys remember it's zone industrial, it's been zone industrial for 20 years.
I understand that. But when you guys approve it, you didn't approve to go back that far.
We didn't approve all the noises and stuff coming off it. No one's seen that part.
What do you mean? You guys don't drive by there and look to say, "Hey, you know, being in your backyard." I mean, would you like to come home, hard day of work and sit in the backyard and can't even open your windows because the dust is so bad?
I understand that. I'm just saying, no one's, no one foreseen the way it was, when it was done and put as a plan. No one's seen it all the way back to your thing. It's not the way it was shown on here.
You got the gentleman that's running this board right now pretty much doing what he wants to do in his backyard.
Well, that's why...
In our backyard.
Sorry, in our backyard.
You know, we can still bring it up and talk to them and see what they'll do and stuff like that.
You're going to permit it? Honestly, you're going to permit him for it? It's not, sorry, sorry. This, we are not zoned heavy industrial for that. State of Minnesota should be already checked into it. You have to be heavy industrial. Castle was not heavy industrial.
What, to have a rock crusher?
Yes, you have to have constant water going to it, everything. One other thing too, the lights. Why do you have to have lights way the hell back in your, in the back of your property?
What type of lights are they?
Big lights.
The big lights are shiny. Come on, these guys, it's obvious. It's a shadow coming off there.
Okay, there's a light, is it a lock light?
Yeah, it's a lock light.
The lock light.
The big ones that hang up there.
Yeah.
Why raise them? What do you give light back for?
Yeah, maybe like eight or nine.
I mean, you guys never took into that consideration how it's going to affect the people.
You gotta remember, it wasn't shown on the plan we originally approved it. It was not shown that way on the plan we originally approved. Wasn't shown with lights back there, it wasn't shown with that.
It wasn't showing a rock crusher back there and stacks of concrete behind your house?
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair Pyman. This is the public comment period. Anyone who's in the public comment should feel free to make their comments, have their voices be heard. There shouldn't be, let's try to avoid a back and forth going on right now. But I want to have the opportunity to talk as well.
I understand that. I kind of like to have your input too on it. But you got to, see us, that we're living, you guys don't live like that there.
Well, you've got to give us a little bit of time.
I understand.
And we understand, that's why we're doing this tonight. We knew that we were going to be here tonight and that's fine. That's what we're here for.
I understand that.
So is your other board here for that. And you have to understand, when these site plans are reviewed and they're brought up, were you at that meeting?
What's the site plans? No, not the, we haven't even done the plan.
Did I say something?
We're trying to keep a little control.
And I'll quit, this is the last thing. I'm more upset that the people on the board that tell us that he was on this board, it's flabbergasted. I'm sorry, and I don't know if he'll be here tomorrow. I'll be here tomorrow. Because this, this is wrong. Because they could have said, "Mr. Minney, you know, he's going to be there, he's on the board." This is the first time I've been here. Didn't know he was here. And it's still a conflict of interest. One other thing, did he ever discuss what's going on with you guys here about his place?
We care, we care.
See his hands in the hat. So, it is, it is, you're ruining self, so we get this straight now.
Thank you, thank you. First, thank you for your time. Anybody else?
Yeah.
My name's Jim Dennis. I live at 5836 Church, next door to Minnie's. I'm across the street from Jim and Sarah and the other neighbors across the street. And she has cancer. She's been very sick. She's not going to be here. And Jim and them just called me, but didn't answer it. But they're pretty, they're pretty upset. It's right in their backyards. I mean, this stuff is right in their backyard. They're, they're not going to come here and complain because they're older and whatever. But Jim and Sarah's got a bunch of kids and things and they're watching this. They're looking at this going, "What the hell's going on?" And this is crazy. Chairperson, I'm sorry, he seems like an alright guy, but to be on a chair and doing what he's doing, something's wrong.
Well, and that's why we have, again, that's why we have the planning commission.
And we can't be, did anybody send out something saying, "Hey, there's got to be..."
Well, I'm not trying to be smart, but we go on a journey all the time.
I understand that, but when you approve something, do you let people know in the neighborhood? There's like eight houses right there.
If it takes a special approval or something like that.
Okay.
Then it will go out.
I've never gotten anything for a rock crusher.
That was not a special approval that I remember. I don't believe it.
I think everyone's trying to determine what's going on.
Yeah. So, we need to, we need to change what we're doing tonight. Excuse me. Go ahead. You're here a lot longer than I was. But, you know...
I was here a lot of times.
Yeah.
Trust me.
You look for it.
Yeah, I was here, when I built my house 22 years ago, I was in here every damn week for a year. Get my ass kicked because somebody wanted a ditch done, somebody wanted this done, somebody wanted that done. I jumped through frickin' hoops, man. I almost gave up on my house because of crap I got from this place. Burning permits, bullshit. And I did it every week. I had come down here on Thursday to get a burning permit because they're not open on Friday. I had to drive by me. Couldn't give me one over the phone. They couldn't text me. They couldn't fax me. Okay? So, I've been through the river road.
Go back to where you want us to be tonight. Tell us what you want, tell us what you want us to know.
I want you to listen to the people within that neighborhood.
Okay.
Or call us, or come by and say, "Hey, this is going to happen." Not just get banging and booming and bullshit.
Let's watch the language.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. But you understand where we're at?
Oh, I understand perfectly. I've been there. I know what you're doing on both sides of the fence.
And you know, we read this stuff and it's like, you know, we've got nice houses out there.
Yes, we do.
And it says right on the thing, if something tears into your, cost of your house, if I want to sell my house, what am I going to give for it?
In today's world, not, probably not too bad right now. But that's beside the point.
You want to buy it? Million bucks, you can buy it tomorrow.
My wife will...
I'll move right out of here.
No, but thank you.
Alright.
I really appreciate you guys.
Hello. Hi, my name's Wolf. I live at 5679 Church Road. And I am exactly about a half mile due north of this operation. So, what I'm concerned about is the dust. It is horrific getting down there. I still farm. What is this doing to my hay bills? What is it doing to my pastures? What is it doing to my breathing? It is noisy. I hear it a half mile away. Those lights at night are obnoxious. You look at towards 26 and it's like a Christmas tree. And I'm still governed by rights of farm, I'm ag. So, this is having an impact on what I'm doing too. Plus, one of the reasons from all that dust. So, I would strongly you stop this crushing operation. I mean, he has other business there, I understand, right? But what is the dust doing and do we have to file other motions? But it's very awake.
I, you know, I hope, I hope not. Because this is a community and this is what we do. And we have to listen to each other. We have to understand what all you folks are talking about tonight. And we need a chance to digest it though, so that we can look at it and go amongst ourselves a little bit and see what we need to do. Well, I can tell you, we're very, very concerned. These two folks right here in the front row, I've heard from a couple of them a number of times in the last week or so because they are that concerned about you. And we are. So, there's got to be a rational approach to this. And that's what we're going to do. And I'm going to ask you kind of a strange question, so forgive me, okay?
Okay.
Alright. No, but the dust that you're talking about, would you say that was, that happened when you started the crusher moving?
Yes, and that's when I noticed...
So, before that, it was reasonable, not reasonable, but you didn't notice it as much?
But with that crusher, I guess it's called, on top of that mountain or whatever, you can just see it.
Okay. And the prevailing wind?
Well, I'm due north of them.
Okay.
So, it would be a south wind, which doesn't happen every day, but it does happen.
It does happen.
It does happen every day.
In Michigan, everything.
Right, and I have, and I have fields and production, that's what I'm concerned about.
Sure. And I understand you so. Is it, is it gathering on your windows, so to speak?
I have noticed different... It's a little, it seems a little grayer than dirt, you know what I'm saying?
So, you notice it a little bit more?
Yeah, I wouldn't say that, you know, if you went out there, you'd say that cement dust or anything, but it is different. And all my horse stalls have windows with screens and I have noticed more on those screens in the horse stalls.
Good. Very good.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I'm not going to do that because, boy, if you can't scan. I mean, go back to the original site plan.
Can you talk to him, please?
Yeah.
Jim, we're going to have to ask you to stand up at the podium.
I, no. My question is, go back to the original site plan, what he requested. And if there's crusher planning on there, wouldn't that be so simple?
Jim, I can't answer your question. I don't know. I mean, we're, you know, there's such a thing that we, again, we have to gather information and see what we've got and then we'll try and move forward.
But my point is, go back to his, I don't got a dog in that life. But I'm saying, if it wasn't in his site plan what he intended to do and he's doing today as a surprise, where's the problem? You apparently must okay that site plan for something and have Minnie's out.
Yeah, of course.
Right.
Of course. But this is, I just learned about it last meeting, most last week.
Last week.
Last week. As we want to really, you know, kind of get on with us and on the board.
When did the transition from Ubi and Sherman, which was a very good one, to the new man, when did that happen?
Well, I'm going to take that as a compliment.
So, do it because I don't give a moe to you.
Oh, right. I'll be, you know, I'm getting a little old for this kind of thing, you know what I mean?
I know.
So, I'll be here till the end of the year.
When did the transition take place?
The election took place at the last board meeting. And that's an internal election, just so you know.
But that's a conflict of interest.
He's, he's...
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm done?
Yeah, yeah, you're done.
No, just so you know, just seeing if there's anybody else. Is there anyone else on the topic? Jim, anything else? Thanks for your...
Up to this point, I've, I've all seen more of you today.
So, that's good. Anybody else that would like to?
Yeah. I'm Debbie Lips Carbone, 8014 Lindsay. And you know, I was here for the meeting last week and I heard these people talking about the situation. Honestly, if it was me, I don't know what I would be doing. Because the dust, that's a big, huge deal. I have farm animals. I don't want that dust. I see, I unroll my hay because it's the cheapest way to feed my animals. So, I see what's already in the hay. I couldn't imagine having more of that. And then the artificial lights. I've been complaining about the gas station at Division and Palms. You know, there's a set of lights and then there's this extra set of lights that the gentleman in the blue, little blue house on the southeast corner, his yard is just plastered. Again, I couldn't, I'm here enough. I would be here even more if I lived where these people live. The rock crushing, I cannot imagine. I, I'm on the corner of Lindsay and Palms. I hate it. If I had a million dollars, I'd move my house 600 feet back in the corner. Put up 100-foot trees. I hate that, I hate it. The only thing I'm missing is the movement when you're broke down on the side of the road and the cars are going by. That's the only thing I'm missing in my bed, in my living room. I miss things and on TV, you know, because you can't hear, boom, a truck went by, a motorcycle went by. Everything's just getting out of control here in the country. It's really not as nice as it used to be. Back to the artificial light situation. So, I'm, you know, researching that. It has a huge impact on lightning bugs. I'm an older person, I remember the lightning bugs. You had so many, you had them in jars and used them as nightlights. Now, you hardly see them. Well, a lot of it is their reproduction of lighting. And when you add in the artificial lights, it really, you know, affects the reproduction anyway. So, I'm just asking for the board to seriously look at the situation from the rock crushing, the artificial lights. And I'm trying to picture the two houses they're talking about. So, yeah, that is very far back and I'm trying to picture the backyard. I mean, how far from the house are they? Two acres, one acre? Five acres? I don't know. But just please, look into the whole thing, the whole mountain pile, the rock crusher, the artificial lights. And then all else I have to say is, I own a business at the corner of Lindsay and Palms and I am hosting a petition for the wind and solar to come back down to the local ordinances. So, if anybody wants to sign those tonight, if you haven't already signed somewhere. Or you can always stop at the shop and sign it there. But I do have the petition for that.
Thank you, thank you. You back here?
Yeah. I just want to say that this is going to be a conflict of interest for him to be on here for you guys to decide what you're going to do.
Well, that's a decision that, you know, that will be made by the township board. We are a, we recommend to the township board our site plan. And they are the folks who run the township. We try and do everything we can to give them a good picture of what's going on. And that's what we're going to try and do here, Anthony. And with, with your involvement, your, you know, the folks here, that's what we want to do.
That's why I'm here because they said the site plan should know what he was supposed to do over there. What the site plans, what did the site plan say?
Well, we don't have a right to promise. We have to go back and look at it and review it, just like you said.
Okay.
Okay.
I got nothing.
No, we look for a site plan, we look for dust, we look for lighting, we look for all, right? That's all part of the site plan.
In the meantime, do drive down Church Road and just look at it.
I remember a couple of...
It's a business. We're all, we're all here to do something, but have some consideration out there.
We appreciate it, thanks for the insight. Thank you.
Give me the good news first.
Go ahead.
I don't want nothing to say.
No?
So, can I just say one thing real quick? As I'm just hearing about it, as other people are just hearing about it. So, we do need time to look back on what it was approved, which was years ago or a couple of years ago, and see where we're at. But in defense of the actual board, I'm a business owner too and there will be a day. And my business could bring up anything. I don't want to upset people, but someday I could, I'm sure in the past I have. At that point, I will recuse myself. But don't hold that against the person sitting on the board because one thing we are doing, we're just trying. So, hopefully, we'll be able to come to a resolution that will keep you guys happy. And then you won't see that as a bad fault on him in the long run. Because there aren't a lot of people that step up to be on everything. And hopefully, this will work out. Because like I said, hopefully, somebody will come on me and I will walk away and my peers will decide something and it may not be in my favor, you know? But I'll live by it, because that's how the process works. And that's what we just gotta give this time to see where that's gonna go. And let's, it may all work out. And we hope that that's what happens, and you'll respect us in the end.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm Brenda Loper. Uh, I am the executive or administrative assistant to the Planning Commission, and I was present at the board meeting last week.
Yes.
Uh, and if my memory serves me correctly, and I will rely on you, Mr. Mini, because I believe I gave you a formal complaint form.
Yes, we did.
Which I also believe that you brought it in the next day. So, just so everyone is aware, the township just found out about this last Wednesday when you called. So it was a week ago, just a week ago. And then on Thursday, if my memory also serves me correctly, Mrs. Mini came in.
Yes.
And then they both appeared with some of these folks last Tuesday. So, since all of that occurred, Mr. Mini has spoken to and submitted a formal complaint form to our, uh, code enforcement officer. I have been in touch several times with Ms. LeVere, our township planner. So she is aware of what's been happening. She's working through what process, what options may be available, unless I stand corrected, Karen. She's working through the process that will ultimately come before all of you as a body. And, um, Mr. Sarko was appointed as chairperson before this happened?
Yes.
Before this was made known. So I can tell you, I worked with him through the building process. I had nothing to do with the planning commission approval, or what was not on the site plan, or what was. But when Mr. Sarko came through the building process, he made every attempt to, uh, comply with everything, Mr. Zeus is here, the building official is here. He made every attempt and ultimately complied with every requirement that we placed on him. And so I can really tell you, and Mrs. Wolf knows me, that he will do what is right. He will do what his peers at this table are asking and requiring of him. But like I said, and we all know, this just happened a week ago. So just, and he stopped, if you, if I stand.
Yes, he did stop. He did stop.
It's gotten very quiet.
Yes. So that must say, and I don't want to exchange.
No, I, I, I don't, but it, it just, it, it really pissed me off, because nobody said he was on the board of this. Wouldn't you be upset when you come to find out that the person you're complaining about, and everybody on the township never even said a word about it?
I know we're different personalities, but Mr. Sarko did recuse himself. He removed himself from the room. And whenever it's necessary, he will do, yes, he did.
Yes, he did. I have credit for that. I do have credit for that.
And so I would say that's what you can expect going forward, is that whenever appropriate, he will do everything that he needs to do to satisfy the requirements that are, may be put before this body or otherwise. But he is.
He's done everything. If you have a vote, he can't even vote with it, right? So there's, there's. We don't sit there and talk to each other all month, right?
Mike Kyra, Matt fifty seven seventy five County Board. I was just gonna make a comment that I think maybe it would be helpful to diffuse some of the frustration is maybe an awareness of like what the process is. So when a decision of something like this comes up, there's an issue, and it's brought to your guys' attention, is there a vote to that, to where, even if you had an option to vote, that he would be one of a group of people, to where, whatever the remedy would be proposed to put into place? So if everybody has a vote, is that how it works?
He has to, uh, recuse himself for that too. You can't, you can't.
Even so, I guess my point for these folks is that if a remedy is proposed, and there has to be a vote to implement that, there's more than just him that's making that decision.
Mr. Bois, Mr. Bois, Chair, if I may, if, um, whatever the process may be, he will basically be an applicant. He will not be a part of the decision-making process. He will be an applicant like anyone else who is an applicant who comes before the board.
Be standing, you're standing.
And he'll go through the same process of, you know, is this, you know, where, could this work on this site? Where could it? Is it appropriate? What are the conditions if it were to be allowed? It'd be a whole process, just like anyone else today. Uh, we have someone going through the special land use process. And, you know, he, he'd be going through this, uh, the same or similar thing, um, if that were the case.
Fair enough. But that's, I just was hoping that maybe that there's some clarity to what they could expect going forward of what the process would look like.
Conflict of interest, if a board member becomes an applicant, they are not part of the decision-making process.
Fair, thank you.
Is it including family members and people that work here? Nobody works for that company? Just making sure.
They would have to recuse themselves too.
We would be here now.
Yes, so they'd have to recuse themselves.
But I didn't know he was on a chair either.
Is there anybody else we can move on forward with anything? No?
I can tell you, I worked with those guys out there. They came down to Shelby. They did first-class stuff up there. If you go by the place, you can see.
It's pretty.
Beautiful place.
She gotta listen to it.
All right, let's move on then. Would you bring him back in, please? Thank you.
So please, folks, okay.
No more shopping.
Now let us, let us try to do our job a little bit.
We do appreciate you bringing it up. A lot of us didn't know what's going on. We live in the community too. We don't want the same thing. So we're gonna look into it and solve it, so you guys have a resolution down the road for all this. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All these people are mad and stuff.
Yep, doesn't fire a fire.
Not mad.
It's disheartening to hear our, my residents talk about it, so.
Been here twenty-two years.
I've been here twenty-five. I get it. I think that was the first thing we did, huh? At least approved the minutes, huh?
We did.
Okay. Welcome back, sir.
Thank you, sir.
We'll have to go back. We haven't approved the agenda for April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, so.
Okay.
We'll go ahead and do that really quick.
Well, can I get a motion to approve the agenda from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four? I'm happy. Okay. Second? Okay. Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Here.
All right.
Okay. Next on the agenda, unfinished business. Uh, First Point Conservation Club. Okay, would you like to step forward?
Dave Armstrong, I'm a board member of First Point. And we gave you all the paper.
Yes, you certainly did, sir.
Yeah. And build a house.
Hi, Steve. How are you tonight?
Great, yourself?
Good, sir.
This is Steve Wick, an engineer that designed the papers here, all with our combined information.
You've been a long ways. Appreciate it. Does somebody hear from PCE or?
Project Control Engineering is our consulting firm. And just as folks are coming looking through this, they, they review our site plans when they come in. We're at the engineering aspect, and we get a review on that. It's part of what this process is. So if you understand, be a little bit understandable, we're up to here.
We'll start with Karen. Karen, you had a chance to take a look at this?
Yes, um.
Any comments?
Yeah, based on, uh, we asked the applicant to provide, um, updated, an updated site plan as well as elevations and floor layout to address concerns that were brought up at the last public hearing. Uh, the only concerns I had were, um, just confirming what the width of the maneuvering, maneuvering lanes were, um, the parking area. Um, maneuvering lanes for ninety-degree parking needed to be twenty-four feet in width, and I believe you had some sixty-degree parking. Lengths had to be eighteen feet, and I, I couldn't confirm that.
That's all shown on the second sheet of the set that we submitted. We replied to that email last week indicating that that and your landscaping request is on the second sheet. There were three site plan sheets, one with the primary information, the second with the landscape information, and the parking and maneuver, maneuvering lanes, and the third with the dumpster enclosure. And when we replied to that, that's, that is the sheet, and plus we replied to that email we read.
This is called out with twenty feet.
So, yeah, if those widths are met, then that satisfies, satisfies that concern for me. And then, um, the landscaping goes on the western parking lot. The ordinance just requires, um, six evergreens for every thirty feet and one large deciduous trees, and I saw landscaping indicated, but the type I was not. Yeah, this year planting schedule stall addresses my concern, and I know last time there was concerns about the, um, the, the safety of the indoor, uh, of, of the, the floor plan of the proposed building. And, um, I didn't have any concern, any concerns with what was being shown on the floor plan.
Okay, thank you. Anybody from the board have any concerns or questions based on what we see now in front of us?
Um, just a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. The, um, Steve, uh, I didn't see where we designated the handicaps at all. Those are along the front of the building.
Existing building.
So those are along the front of the existing building?
Correct.
Okay. So in looking at this, the code I think is one for, I forget how many parking stalls. One handicap stall for X number of parking stalls. I would have to look it up. I don't know off the top of my head. Okay, but I think, when I looked at this the other day, it seemed to me like we needed seven or eight. It certainly seems like.
We have twelve.
You have twelve. You should have, we, I have a problem there. Can we label those just as handicap stalls? We can do that. And will there be?
They're striped in blue, not yellow.
Yellow. You got it, Dave. Yeah, work. And, uh, that will also include the, uh, the ramps that will be required in that area, or are they?
There are no ramps necessary.
Zero clearance, everything's.
Gotcha.
Piece of weather strip, that's all that's there.
So the building, you're distributing pellet guns and, and archery?
Yes.
So we're not, so it's, it didn't have to be a little soundproof?
Pellet guns are for the youth, for the arch.
Does it stay dead on there?
Well, right, well, I, if, if.
There was, uh, there was a specification on the fourth floor.
Is there? The only, and maybe I'm not seeing it, the only concern I have, and I think this was addressed or brought up last time as well, you're using this kind of kicker up to the building for long storage, which I think you guys had mentioned, gas-powered equipment, gas, which would I would assume include.
That could be in the, the building, that's the L-shaped part of the building.
In this, this area here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything, I, I mean, we're, we're gonna have a firewall in there?
Firewall in there. I've already talked to the builders. Very up on that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to, I, I mean, it would be nice to have that on this drawing.
That'll be on drawings, the concrete for a building from it.
Okay.
Now let's get this part first.
I understand.
And you'll need that to get the, um, fire inspection for the fire marshal office.
And we also have a Egress Plan Two.
I understand this, this story doesn't need the, the raised floor two, correct?
Correct.
That, that's storage of just the, the equipment?
Clay pigeons.
Play pigeons, that's used.
We get a semi load of them about every year, year, couple of months, and it's twenty-four pallets. And it fills up a room. And when they're not using, uh, the decoys, the archery targets, they're brought in and they're stored in there also. They're life-size elk gear, bear, all, all the chosen targets.
Steve, on the, um, one of the things that, and I appreciate this, you, uh, have on here the fire rated capacity?
Yes.
And so from the fire rated, or what we are showing on the wall, right, is there a plaque on the wall? Dave, did we ever find out about that?
Octicency?
Yeah.
I think there's one at each bar. Yeah, one in the front, one in the back.
So what we're showing?
I don't know what those numbers are, but.
Okay, we've got it on the plan now.
Reflected on the plan, yes.
Yes, and it's three hundred and fifty people.
Yes.
Okay, so we're all, we're, we're copacetic, correct? And the two, the uses of the structure, both structures, will not be used at the same time. Is that my answer correct on that? I believe that was a statement that was made at one of our meetings, but just so we've got it on record.
Both buildings, well, one is the main building, where there's a kitchen, the food.
Yeah.
All the bathrooms and the bars.
That's a three.
We don't serve alcohol, and there's no bathrooms in the building that we're proposed to build.
Okay. But will there be functions at each, at each of those?
Well, it would be called one big function if it's, um, designated that way. Yeah, they kind of come in, they gotta check in, they wanna get something in the kitchen.
Which is very good, by the way, with the check-in. I got you there.
Yeah.
But is there, what's, what's the, I'm trying to understand what, what's the concern here?
Yeah, my concern is that we just all understand that the fire rated capacity of the existing building is three hundred and fifty seats.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and, and my question was, we have three hundred and fifty seats, obviously, where all of us normally go, and we have.
Right.
Dinner over there, what have you. My question was, and then I'm being clear here, will, is, can people use the archery area? Can they go into that other section and, and use that building, that other building at that same time?
Well, the archery group, they, they have their special night that they do their archery. And the kids do their pellet league, that's on their special night.
Okay.
And the Boy Scouts, there's three different troops, and they have their mites, so.
So Steve, if we're looking at this and I just get an idea, it's a little, and, and it's hard to figure out kind of what the required parking is gonna be for that.
Parking that is designated on there is satisfactory, or if both buildings were in use?
Okay. That, that's where I was.
There is enough spots for both buildings simultaneously.
This building's rated at three fifty. And I, and, and what's the, what's the rating capacity, fire rate capacity for the new building?
Like twenty-six people.
The apartment, oh, the, the fire rate. Said something like twenty-six, yes. Cause you, some of the minor assembly areas in conjunction with the storage, you don't have many occupants there.
Understood. Just the leagues and whatever's in there at the time.
There's eighteen or twenty, that chute archery. Uh, the Boy Scouts, there's probably about ten, twelve kids and a handful of parents. So it's not big numbers, but.
So that's a gem for the max of that building?
Twenty-six people, yes.
Yeah, that's what would be in there most commonly, yes.
So on the project control engineering letter, has this been all addressed? I noticed it's dated April fourth. I didn't know if these.
This is third second shot, that is true.
Okay, so I'm assuming that's all done. Okay, sorry, I dropped that.
But, no, it's not necessarily.
That's, um, the site plan, it said, the site plan has no defined scale from an engine, they take no objection to the proposed site plan, so that was fine. From an engineering-related item, the following items are to be provided for the engineering review.
And those three bullet points will be addressed during the building process.
During the building process, okay. And that's just so you're aware of that. Okay, cool, that's all I have.
Did that present you any problems, Steve, with that PCE letter, with the way that was written?
No.
We're okay with that?
I, I see nothing. It's, no, I, I recall, I recall that that's common, except this letter.
So you guys have a copy of that also? I was just making sure of that.
At, the only, or last question I have, at twelve thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square feet, I believe, and I'll have to double-check this, but that, it's gonna require a fire suppression system, correct?
A fire separation.
So, so with the firewall, you'll be less than twelve thousand square feet in one given space, so you won't need it? Is that what you're saying?
And we designated the, the building, per the Michigan Building Code, and its use, I believe where we are, you can get thirteen five between fire separation barriers.
Fair enough.
Covered either on the front page of that, or on the first page, our code sheet of the floor plans.
The dumpster.
Already shown on the building plans, right, when you submitted?
That would be, yes.
The dumpster area, Steve?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm shy of Masonry Dumpster.
Yes.
Is that a new one? Is that?
No.
We, we change companies, but it's identical size and identical spot where it's always been.
And what is, what is, what is it made of? What is?
It's steel.
Oh, okay.
Steel case with a, the plastic cop doors that are on an angle.
You're asking the enclosure, not the actual dumpster itself, right?
The enclosure. I'm seeing here a dumpster with Masonry Dumpster enclosure.
Do you have a, a brick wall around your dumpster?
No, no.
A, a wall around the dumpsters, what we're indicating.
So you'll be adding that?
Put together, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it currently is not that.
That's good. Which will make it a lot, which would make it a lot better too, right?
We've never had a complaint with it.
Never had a complaint?
It's, you know, the bright orange and yellow, but it's a common color around here, so.
Steve, is there a, a subject field in this, in this boardroom building?
There is. Far away from the area where we are working. That is to the back of the property.
I'm gonna point it out to you.
Could you?
Sure. Yes. See this elevated area right here? It shows on the, on the topo, topo map? That's the engineered subject field.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
All righty. And I noticed that you have a note on there, the light lights will be shaded down, just so we don't get interference with our, with the drive, with my son and her.
Yeah, they're all, they're all working now, and they're all facing down.
Okay. All righty.
Can I just say one other thing?
Please.
We got a letter about parking in the street when we get bigger crowds and we want out parking places.
Yes.
We've addressed that, we've approached the county, the road commission, and they've all given their blessing. Put parking lot in on our west side, we own that twelve acres. We're gonna put a hundred and fifty by two hundred and fifty lot that fits up to about eighty cars. So we're hoping that gets it off the road, and that project's gonna start June first. We've got material coming, and we've got culverts ordered, and we have an in-drive and out-drive. Not on the road, it's coming off our property. So I, I ask you, what do I need from the township to do this?
We're gonna need a site plan, and, you know, this will have to be revised, Dave, to show us what you're gonna do, what I would suggest. Here, I'm talking about a tournament, so I don't, I would suggest you, you do a preliminary-
Mark back.
Off of this, you're gonna bring it up to this palm tree.
Toward palms, correct.
Palm tree. Bring it in to us, we'll sit down with Roland, just like we did before, with John. And Mike, if we, you know, if the schedule's allowed, anyway, we'd like you to come in. We really have good luck, if you will, when we bring people in and we just sit down and we talk. I think, you know, what we did with you-
We've done it before, yes.
You know, I, I think we're fairly well.
Okay, I can answer almost seventy-five questions, Steve can't.
What did, what did you say, the dimensions of your, your new parking lot or anything?
One fifty by two fifty.
Okay, so you're basically taking the entire depth of this, it's just coming out this way, a hundred and fifty feet, away from, towards the west, a hundred and fifty? But you, you got a dimension of two forty-two here, call it two fifty this way, right?
Yes.
So you're just going in?
Nope, no, we're coming, two driveways, which is gonna eliminate your trees. Two driveways, so it's coming to one fifty wide, two fifty feet.
Okay.
And we'll plant new trees on it.
Gotcha.
I think we have eighteen inch, the road commission requires eighteen inch culverts. Plus, you have different plans, but the road commission seemed to be right up on it, and they gave us their blessing.
Oh, yeah.
Put eighteen inches in there and enjoy it.
Enjoy it. Okay. You may wanna think about what material will be used for your, for that parking lot.
Well, actually, I do know.
You do?
It's gonna be the ruins of Marine City High School.
Oh, is that right?
Yes.
I don't know how to take that, David.
It's, the building's coming down June first, and they needed a place to dump. He's a member of our club, and we talked about it, said, hey, wait a minute. We need some base product to put down first.
And we'll talk about that at the next meeting, I guess.
We have a bulldozer coming, gonna push the topsoil off, and it'll create a berm all the way around. And this masonry material is gonna be going bottom.
Your township is gonna be very pleased with that decision, trust me.
All right. We have anything else, anybody else have any questions, comments? All right, we ready to make a decision on this? Anybody wanna make a motion on this?
Yeah, make a motion. I make a motion to approve the site plan for First Point County Conservation Club dated three twenty-six, twenty-four.
Excellent. Okay, motion of the second, all favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. I will need a motion to open the public hearing for Ponzo Properties. You have a motion on that?
I'm gonna make a motion to open, make a, for a public hearing.
Okay, you have a motion and a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carry. Mr. Ponzo? Good, sir, how are you? So this is also not your first time here. As you're aware, what you're coming in front of us for is a special land use review. So we'll hear from you, ask you some questions, and then we will vote to, oh, put, put the public hearing out. And then that, as long as that goes well, will be the next meeting, right? We can get that done in time?
Well, after Mr. Ponzo speaks, if there's any public, we sent letters to all the moving property owners within two weeks. If any of those folks are here, we will address that.
Very good.
And then Karen kind of knows what happens next.
Gotcha. Karen, you wanna open us up on this one, please?
Sure, this is at fifty-seven thirty-nine County Line Road. The zoning district is B two, and this is a special land use review. The applicant is proposing to construct an RV dumpster facility at the site, which is currently approved as a construction yard. The applicant is proposing the storage facility on the east side of property. Facility will include three indoor storage buildings, all measuring thirty-nine thousand six hundred square feet, providing a total of a hundred and sixty units. Indoor storage facilities are set back over sixty-five feet from east property line, seventy feet from the south property line, and over seventy feet to north property line. The space between indoor facilities is fifty-two feet. The applicant will need to confirm the height of the proposed structures, elevations of the proposed building should be provided, including any proposed lighting. The following special land use provisions are provided for this use per Section thirty. Special land use is permitted with approval in B two district. Self-storage warehouses, wholesale merchandising establishments are similar, indoor storage uses may be permitted in the B two district, subject to the following. The owner and or operator shall not commit any business activity to be conducted from an individual storage unit or units. The proposed storage warehouses shall be limited to the storage of private property by businesses and individuals. The applicant should confirm that this standard will be met. Item number two, the minimum spacing between self-storage buildings should be thirty feet, where one-way, where one-way tractor pattern is used, the standard is met. If the site directly abuts or lies across the street from a residential district, a masonry, screened wall, obscuring fence, or landscaping greenbelt should be provided, at the discretion of the planning commission. In deciding what type of screening is required, the commission shall evaluate which would be the most appropriate to the neighborhood area in question. The planning commission should discuss this with the applicant, if the applicant has stated that a twenty-foot greenbelt will be provided at the north and south property lines. It should be determined what sort of landscaping this should be. Item number four, every self-storage, storage warehouse shall have an employee on-site at all times during business hours. The planning commission applicant should discuss the nature of the business operations. I would say that this provision of this ordinance, considering how advanced self-storage systems have gotten in the last, you know, two decades, this is very archaic language, I'm not saying it's not appropriate, but maybe the language for future consideration should be, it's up to the planning commission if there needs to be an employee on-site, depending on what the nature of the storage unit is. I believe Mr. Ponzo has some, proposing some automated punchkey system for his, for the patrons, which I believe would be appropriate for this type of warehouse.
I agree with that.
And upon the applicant being able to address the above concerns, I recommend the planning commission move forward, I recommend approval of these special land use.
Okay. So a couple, a couple minor concerns, but I think some of these you've addressed before. Like Karen said, the employee on-site, I think, I think it's, we've talked about that. I think you come up with a good plan to automate this thing, I, I don't see any issue there. Do you have, have you considered this, does twenty-foot greenbelt and the landscaping, what's your thoughts on that?
I mean, now, the outside backs up to woods, the north side to a farming field.
Right.
That's a lot of road, I mean, I'm gonna fence in the whole thing, obviously.
Okay.
So, I mean, I mean grass, I mean, being wide tree, I mean, see it, I don't really have to do anything.
Yeah, I mean-
You put screen and fences up there?
Yeah, I mean, possibly a, a flat, a flat fence, maybe would be suffice at least.
Cause in twenty feet, it's, we'll start mowing our trees.
Right.
Not that much room.
But someday it could change, right, Dan?
Yeah, that's my concern, is that if we-
To housing, or if you're gonna go to, somebody, a trucking company owns it right now? You know, and then if a trucking company owns it, my offside goes to five feet. And if I, that way, she, if she were to rezone that, to build that trucking depot, I own it to be five feet away.
Right.
So if they ever got rezoned, I could actually make that driveway bigger than I'd tear out my landscaping. Right, and the odds of somebody building a house there right now, she'd have to sell it all.
But the problem is, we can't, we can't go on odds.
I know.
We have to go on zoning records, and we have to consider, as, as to, what we're talking about a lot tonight, are the neighbors, and how that all works. Are we gonna put this up into the public then, too, John?
I would-
So is that only where he resides residential? That he needs that, that type of fencing and shielding is only where he resides residential? Is that what I'm reading, is that correct?
There's a residential or ag use.
Or ag, okay, I didn't realize it was or-
Then it has to be twenty-five, and right now, if it's not utilized, there's anything, if it's, you know, if it's commercial.
Okay, cause in here, it said only residential, so I didn't know if that included ag or not.
Ag includes ag.
Is the same?
Well, one of the things, Dan, that I'd be a little concerned about, obviously, and again, just the neighbors to the west of us, I know they're across the road. And there may be something that we wanna look at as far as upgrading that landscaping that's there right now. That's, you know, right now, we know that there's, we've got neighbors, and-
From the west? We have, pardon me.
Across county line?
Across county line.
Across county line.
In that is.
The neighbors are over here across county line.
No, that's, that's the north.
No, I mean, he is right, it is the west, the west, there's residential homes to crop out.
Yeah, and you're talking one or two hundred feet. And I have that berm.
Right.
So he's got, he's got a little drive, I mean, other than putting, I guess, a line of trees across that berm?
Well, you know, again, we're talking about people's homes, and we're talking about a B two zone. And it's residential. Now, I know there's a rural county line that goes through there, that's fine, but they are going to see, if I lived over in the west side of County Line right now, what is the height of your, your sand, your sand piles, your piles that are there right now?
Oh, I don't know. Those aren't gonna leave, that's what's going for the road base back there.
Well, okay, I, I understand. But Karen, do, do we have anything in the ordinance as far as height of piles of sand, dirt in a B two? Or not that we're aware of, or something that shoots at you very much? Okay. That's where I would be coming from, Dan. You know, even more so than even with north and the south, is, is what's happening there. Those are your neighbors that you have to deal with right now, today. And, you know, Mr. Chairman, that may be something that we wanna look at.
I'm not saying they're gonna, say, put more trees on the front berm?
Something like that.
I think, when I did it, I went more than what was required.
That looks really good.
And, thank you. The berm is higher than what's required.
We have local placement.
I do have one more question on the plan. Are your entrances to your storage buildings east and west, or north and south?
North and south.
So they're in the long sections of the building?
Yeah, like everybody, everybody gets their own entrance.
Oh, so it's an individual storage unit, I'm sorry, I thought they were large buildings.
When you open the door, it will be other than where the firewall will be, so they're gonna be broken down to the ten thousand square foot.
Okay, I get it.
Thing, but when you go in, it will be-
I was thinking, I run a large marina on Harson's Island, and I thought these were large storage units. And I was just thinking, if you were entering on the east and west, you wouldn't have enough curb on thirty feet to make the curb. Cause we have a thirty-nine foot wall, and we can't bring anything in that way.
You won't have like an opener, but we have-
It's gonna be different, okay, so it's not just one open building, I got it. Okay, that's all I have. So the question with the dirt piles is more, nothing to do with the storage buildings, it's the existing area. So that's the existing business.
All right, so, Mr. Ponzo, since this is a, a public hearing, I'm gonna ask if there's any comments from, from the public, from the citizens in regards to the proposed special land use for this property?
Well, I just wanna say, if it's gonna be another business that has a set of lights, and then they have more lights to make sure everybody knows they're there, that we crack down on these heavy lights. I'm still fighting, and I'm coming up here next week, I guess, and file a complaint against the gas station. They're saying it's because of robberies. No, it's because people on ninety-four, you're drawing attention to yourself, because BP is visible from, and people are gonna go there if they don't know the area, cause they can actually see it. So I'm not stupid, I know these bright lights are to attract attention. And a storage unit, if they're gonna be able to enter at all hours, if this is what this is gonna be, make sure that there's not these big, huge industrial lights that cast shadows at one AM from trees and everything, buildings. The artificial lighting has got to calm down. Only because we're in the dark out here, doesn't mean we need to brighten it so much.
Those are all part of the zoning requirements, too, so you know that.
Well, I know, but Joe says, Joe says, you guys are trying to do something about that, but because they're saying it's robberies, we're gonna give them the benefit of the doubt, cause we want everyone safe. That's not robberies.
Okay. All right, any other comments on, on this special land use?
That was my other question, it was just the, the building size, the openings, I didn't understand that, but- everything else, it's pretty, they're just so strange, it's not, and it doesn't seem like any other neighbors around have all received a notice of this, so if nobody's in, there's nobody contesting anything on this special use?
I, I guess I will make a comment, I am his neighbor, Dan and I know each other. I'm at, my, once again, my name is Mike, five seven seven five County Line. I'm directly south of his property or property line, sure.
Is this in his, maybe you haven't seen his drive, but this is your, your existing house in two poll lines here?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
I will just make a comment, that Dan has been a wonderful neighbor. Actually, when he purchased the property, he actually came over and talked to me, we talked about some ideas, how we can be neighborly, so I, I don't foresee there being any issues that raised as a neighbor. You know, I think that Dan and I would work out whatever it comes, and like I said, when there were some concerns about some other stuff that was going on during the whole berm stuff, Dan got right out, there was some water that was, you know, being shed, and he took care of it right away, so. Just so that you know, that's an issue with neighbors, isn't it?
Thank you, sir.
Unfortunately, it's probably not sort of like your situation.
And I think when it comes to special land use, in my opinion, being on a board, that carries a lot, because when it comes to special use, you have a standard use, and you have a special use. Standard use, we have to approve it's standard use. Special use, we can approve. As a representative of the people, if I sit here, and all four of his neighbors said they didn't want it, it's a special use, and I represent the people, I would have to vote in that direction. As a representative of the people, if I sit here and all four of his neighbors said they didn't want it, it's a special use and I represent the people, I would have to vote in that direction. We have a full neighboring people around him, only one has shown, one does approve, that's the person we are representing. You know, so we, to hear that, to hear that carries a lot.
Actually, I, I grew up there, so my parents had owned the property where I'm at, so I, you know, it's been an family for forty-some plus years, and I know what it looked like before, Dan purchased the property, pretty much an abandoned wasteland there.
And I don't see that he's in the area.
And he's got a wonderful job making it, you know, and so I have every confidence that, you know, if he's proposing and working things out, that he's trying to make everything look presentable.
And so everybody knows, the people in the neighboring community, even though they're not a Casco, have been notified also, so they do have a right to come.
People at the rest of the street.
Yeah, so they know and they've been notified, even though they're not a Casco resident, they still.
I wondered that, my son lives north of it.
We wondered.
Yeah.
Any, anyone?
Anybody within, yeah. Jason, and there probably will not be a neighboring home that, around him where he's located. So, that's my comment.
And it's published in the newspapers as well. All of the, all of the publications in the township are published in the Voice newspaper. They're a newspaper of reference. Well, it was a date, but that's how the board decided.
All right, let's, let's, let's bring this back to the public hearing, item number one of the new business. If there's no other comments from the public, I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing in regards to Ponziyo Properties at fifty-seven thirty-nine county line.
Anybody? I'll make a motion to close the hearing for Ponziyo's indoor, outdoor storage facility.
A second?
A second.
Okay, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Karen. So that's the, the public hearing, the next item is, is the actual site plan review. Maybe I jumped a little early on, I'm calling Dan up, but I think we've talked about some of the, the initial concerns in regards to your site plan review. I think there's a couple of things that, that I guess we need to understand a little better, like this, this twenty-foot green belt and how, how we can. Just kind of set in. I guess, I mean, if that's, so you, obviously you have the plan, you have an idea, or your plan is to fence this whole thing in, so, I mean, in, in an effort to try to maintain what you're doing inside your space, maybe a, like a, I don't wanna say a full-blown privacy fence, but like a chain link with the slats in it, something like that would, would probably, would help to suffice.
The, oh, east side and south side. We're literally gonna be backing up the wood, because we have wood there. At the same time, it is physical woods.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I hate to see you put a fence in front of a tree line, I think that would be kinda silly. Yeah, I, I think the biggest concern is gonna be that, the north side and.
Are you fencing only the back section where the buildings are?
Yes, yeah.
From the entrance back, so he's not fencing all the way, where the creek is.
That'll be an electrical gate, and that'll keep Dan, that'll be right back.
The west side would just be adjacent to you.
Yeah.
Would you, so, so there's, I mean, maybe, I don't know, you intended for security to keep people out, there's no intention to put a fence beyond just the gate that crosses your driveway along this west? Yeah, your, your retention pod.
I don't know, it looks like if you got past here, I'll talk to my engineer and see, but had we haven't gotten all.
Well, I guess, the point I'm gonna make is, maybe rather than doing anything with this berm that you've already done, and I think looks great, maybe if you did something here that would help, you know, you have more or less two layers of, of protection, if you will, to your neighbors to the, to the west across county line. And this is gonna be something that is accessible twenty-four hours, like if I, you know, storage, if I'm renting one of these spaces from you, twenty-four hour access. Now, we had, per point with their full site plan, their building elevations and landscape plan and everything.
Exactly.
I mean, is that required at this point, or is that not required until we get to the building or the application?
It's in the zoning ordinance, and it's in the application process. But you have to follow the application process in order to go to the site plan review and get approved.
Right.
Yeah, and the building elevations are on there.
The building elevator, where they have that?
Yeah, in the building.
Fourteen-foot stalls.
You're talking actual building drawings?
It's like, elevations. Oh, you want, oh.
Elevations.
Yeah, not, not, not your topograph elevation, but your, your, you know.
Do you have building drawings already completed?
No, I have gotten prices from building, like.
Green Giant and all the.
Like suppliers kinda thing, but I haven't like narrowed anybody down until, I mean, for, like, to waste everybody's time, until I knew if I could get approved. Now, if I guess they got approved, then I can, you know, get an elevation.
But you understand, in order for us to approve you, we gotta know what you're doing.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
And in order to do that, well, you know, you've been through the circuit. And it's just something that we've had to do. We've approved plans, quite frankly, that should not have been on, you know, that should not have been on the planning commission agenda, and then all of once we get, we get an approval, and then it kinda goes along its merry way, but I, I cannot tell you how big our files are to try and figure out what you are really building.
Yeah.
Nobody knows. So, that's where it gets to be a little strange, and just appreciate what we're trying to do with, with Roland and, and, you know, trying to make all that work. So, it's not just you, okay?
So, Dan, I think at this point, because it's the way the ordinance is written and the process has to go, we're gonna need you to provide a, a drawing of the building with the proposed heights, you know, basically an elevation drawing, you know, your, your, your sides and your ends and your roof line and all that, as well as your proposed lighting plan. Obviously, lighting is gonna be a major topic of conversation with this project. I know you're gonna wanna have it lit up, but we also have to consider light pollution and, and the people in your, your area. I know you've already had some lighting conversations. So I think that's where we're at, I, I think, I think you're moving in the right direction. I don't really see a problem with what you're doing, but I think we need some more information before we can give you a, a full site plan approval. And that, those major items would be those, those structures and what they're gonna look like and elevations and those types of things.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, I know the peak will be about twenty-two feet.
Yeah, right.
So will this have to go to another public hearing now, or will, so it'll just bring back the site plan drawings, and based on what we've seen here at our public hearing, we'll look at the actual buildings that are gonna fill the spaces that are showing here, and the lighting for the property, we'll go from there.
Does that have to happen like in an order meeting, or can I get them to drop them off?
This is another really.
Yeah, it has to be brought here.
And, you know, and it's, there's a whole litney, there's a shopping list, and, and we, if you don't have it, Brenda will be more than happy to give it to you.
It's in the packet, but I can, I could be one on it.
If you would, please. And it, it's all there, so your engineer can take it, do the proper drawings, and then we can run.
Are you hoping to have this open for fall?
One day, not all year.
I know what they process. They're going into winter storage and they're not even in the war yet, but.
Let's, let's move forward with that, Dan. A, a site plan approval that includes your buildings, your landscape plan, your lighting plan, all of those, those items that are gonna be required for full site plan approval, and then once we can take a look at that, we can, obviously you have no, no contention from your neighbors, so I, I don't, I don't see any reason why, with all the right items in the checklist, we can't move forward with this for you.
So just as a side note, as of Wednesday, the seventeenth, your application process switched from fifteen days prior to your meeting to thirty days. So, you'll have to bear that in mind, because their next meeting is.
You won't make it by May?
May twenty-one.
Right, yeah.
It'll be on June.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be June.
Okay.
And we're gonna try to change, make the transition in our books, all of your books will need to be changed, and the book on the website will be changed immediately, so that anyone who checks online will see not only the hoop building amendment, but the fifteen to thirty days.
Can I make a motion and we close call? Item number two, Ponziyo Properties Site Plan Review for completion of plans and final approval.
A second on that?
I second that motion to postpone that.
All right, a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, opposed? Carrie?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is the master plan five-year update. First, first item there, we have a public comment, any, any persons wishing to address a planning commission regarding the five-year plan? Anyone?
How's it written up?
I'm sorry?
How's it written up? I mean, where's your new plan site plan at?
The new master plan? It, it's still in development, so, it, this is more or less comments as to anything you'd like to see, wish to see, hope to see, hope not to see, things of that nature, because the five-year plan, the five-year update to the master plan is still in development, it's not finalized or published yet.
I'm just saying right now.
Does this have to do with Twenty-Six Mile Road as well?
Yeah, yeah, of course.
It's our hotel.
Right, so Debbie Lips Carbone, eighty-fourteen Lindsay Road. So I would like a Twenty-Six Mile Road to stay rural, light industrial, just kinda like how it is. I've been going to the meetings at the Saint Clair County Commissioners, you know, I'm proposing that, well, I spend all this money to end up at King Road, it's a dead-end road, we don't need Hall Road Junior right here, and if it's to just build up and create businesses, go and finish taking it from Grashit. Grashit starts at, you know, Jefferson, downtown Detroit, and comes all the way through, and ends actually up in Saint Clair County. And there's a lot of open land on Grashit between twenty-three and there. Again, just to not waste taxpayers' money to come up Twenty-Six Mile Road. And then I'm also understanding about, I don't know if this has to do with the master plan, but my opinion on the turnabout, or roundabout that's supposed to go in at Twenty-Six and Palms. I go to church on the north side of Grashit off of Palms, and that roundabout there is just horrible, and I drive a Jeep Wrangler. But you can already see all the cements being chopped up, they're not considering the tractors, I don't know how many tractors go through Twenty-Six and Palms, but I know over here it does a lot, because they get a lot of good old traffic with the horse trailers. It's hard to get through there, so if the master plan has anything to do with the roundabout, I don't care if they wanna put one there, but engineer it so it's a little bit bigger, and, I mean, I can't imagine as much semi-traffic that goes down Twenty-Six, how it's even gonna keep things smooth, because they're gonna have to slow down even more, which is fine. I, I don't mind, I mean, high speed, actually, that's, that's me, and that's me. But for them to slow things down, I, I get the whole reason for that, but just, I don't know if, again, if the master plan has anything to do with that, I would say, let's just make sure it's engineered a little more for the traffic.
Nothing to say on that road at all.
So, yeah, so, so when we're considering the master plan and, and the direction of the township moving forward, we're looking at the zoning districts, the land within the township. We don't have a whole lot of control over what the county and state road commissions, DOT, you know, Department of Transportation decides to do with major intersections like that. So unfortunately, as much as I agree with you, there's not a whole lot of control we have over the roundabout or, or things of that nature. So, we're, we're more or less looking at.
Isn't that a county room?
Yeah, that's a.
You have, you have, you have no say-so over the county room?
I mean, we can voice our opinion, but ultimately it comes down to the Saint Clair County Road Commission and the Michigan DOT.
We've been trying to work closely with them, with the roundabouts, and I can tell you, we're not there yet. And it's a little discouraging for me, too.
Kind of state roads and that are a little different than.
Oh, yeah.
Like ninety-four and all that, I thought you had something to do with that.
We are.
You pay for the paving and stuff for that?
Pardon that, pardon you, sir?
That you pay for part of the paving and all that, right? The state road.
If they go to Twenty-Six, there's no expense to us in that?
No.
Particularly in that, but, you know, right now, you've got your decal lanes, you've got all this other stuff that goes on, and.
And those come into play with our properties on our adjacent property, but actual the road paving or redoing, we do not, we do not, that's, I didn't believe, I could be wrong, but I do not believe so.
Karen, did you wanna comment at all on the, the master plan or any updates from the planner?
Right now, we're currently waiting for the county to get mapping data, so we can give you guys some fresh future land use maps, based on the previous discussions and whatever you guys discussed at the last meeting that I may have missed, but we're currently just waiting for that from Saint Clair County JAS.
And just so, I just thought, so everybody knows, it isn't our idea to write a new master plan, you have to have a new master plan, I think, every five years to be eligible for any of this good state money and all this fun stuff.
You have to review it and decide if you want to re-adopt, do a minor update, or do a major overhaul.
So you have to go through the process, or else they don't give you, they think you're not paying attention, you're not getting the money.
Thank you, Karen. Any other comments on the, the master plan or planner's updates?
On the board?
Board had nothing new, they just had elections this last quarter, so that was it.
Gina, can I take that one here?
Yep, I do now.
Okay.
Is that available for public questions regarding the master plan?
Yeah.
I am curious, as I mentioned before, you know, I'm on county line, next to Dan, so is there ever any thought to bring public water from Twenty-Six Mile Road down to Springborn? With, if, because it's my understanding, the last time I looked at the master plan, that, that was eventually slated to eventually go B2, which I think is what we, both Dan and I are. But we, we're on wells there, so I'm guessing I'm just curious if there's ever plans to bring water down county line, because I believe they have water on the other side of, you know, ninety-four going north, but we don't have water from Twenty-Six down to Springborn.
I know, you guys are kind of in a weird little blip there with ninety-four cutting it off, and I think the school was what prompted a lot of that water on the north side of ninety-four, but I'm not aware of any plans to bring water north from Twenty-Six to, to Springborn.
So I guess the reason I'm, I'm asking that is that if eventually the master plan is to make from Springborn to Twenty-Six, being on the Casco side there, if that's to be business, would it be a requirement for a business to have water?
No.
Or everyone is able to, so the business operations would be subject to whatever type of water requirement, would be available for a well?
Correct. I mean, it's no different than on, on Marine City Highway right now, you know, those parcels don't have city water either, so they have an option, they can either put a well in, or they can bore under and tap into IRA's water and pay IRA, you have to pay a frontage fee, you have to pay your water bill to IRA, all those types of things. Unfortunately, where you're at, there isn't water on the other side either, if you chose to, you know, if you wanted to, you know, if, if there was water on the other side, you could choose to do that. You know, if there was water on the other side, you could choose to do that, but there's not there either, so...
For instance, when the trucking company was looking at the corner, the discussion I remember having here was, there isn't water. If they wanted it, they would've had to bring it from 26. It would've been their responsibility to tap all the way to 26. So, it wasn't feasible.
And they only wanted city water because their operation would've been sustainable on the well. And maybe that's part of the reason why they decided not to build there.
So, just to be clear, since it's been a little while since I looked at the map, is the zoning from Dan Ponzi's at Springborn and County Line from there all the way to 26, is that all considered B2, light commercial, or...
So, right now, this, the map on the left here is the official zoning map. So, basically what you're talking about is this area right here. So, all of these orange?
Our B2.
Our B2, yeah. And then, this is basically 94 cutting through here, and then this piece is that ag piece that just kinda wraps around, Dan.
We are looking at that, Dusel. It's in kind of our review process, right on the right turn on that. So, as we're going through this, we welcome you to come to these meetings and get a glimpse of like what we're trying to do of the future.
This is our current future use. So, currently past you guys, going off to the end, you'll see that it's considered light office. Which is similar, but differing in its own little way, which was very applicable many years ago when lots of offices were, I mean, but it was so much use for any offices anymore. So, that's a piece that we might, you know, look at. But they see where things change, you can anytime, compare those two. This is what we're thinking in fighters, and then when we're done, that new chart will go up there.
And, so I appreciate the invitation. So, just so that we can kinda map out our timing. So, are the agenda, is that basically, so we can just keep an eye on what the agenda is, and that way we know if it's applicable for something, I would, you know?
Yeah, Mass will be on every agenda till it's done.
With the, Mass, with the, when the draft of the master plan is available, it'll be available on the website. There is a public review period where it has to be made available, I think it's 60 days. And then there's also a public hearing that's held. So, you can send in written comments, you can attend the hearing, there's lots of ways to provide feedback on your thoughts of the master plan. And again, the master plan is a guide for the township for future policymaking decisions. Sometimes people see the future land use map, and they think, oh my gosh, I'm getting rezoned. And that's not it. It's just, what is the long-term vision for the township?
Christian, you say that the information is accessible on the website. Is the website fixed for Casco Township?
It is.
Well, we are in the process right now of partnering. We have a new website host, Schumacher. Katie and Joe met with them for over an hour and a half on Monday. They are coordinating and putting up a mock website. They're designing a mock website for Katie. She will be our website coordinator. She will work with them very closely. And they're saying it could be up to eight weeks before we are fully up and running. But they are communicating daily, taking information that's on our current website, showing them what we have. They're gonna put it into this mock site, and then she will work towards the final product. But yes, our website's kind of been a bit of a hot mess, and we apologize for that. But we are working towards it.
It's gonna be much more user-friendly for the girls in the office, quicker, easier to scan something, put it up. Very cumbersome now, so it's always been hard. It's gonna be so much easier.
Katie will have control. Anything that needs to be on the site or changed, Katie can do here in the office.
I have all faith in Katie, I, yeah, she has a lot of skill. Can you say your name? Oh, I'm sorry, Donna Netherton. Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think that's pretty much wraps up the master plan update. The next item on the agenda is commission comments. If anything, anything from other commissions? I know you said there was not much, or nothing. Anything? If there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second, huh?
Motion and a second? Third of it? All in favor?